It's a pleasure to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Mercedes, could we have the roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Hanson?
Here.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Here.
Chair Gupta?
Here.
Thank you.
Next, we move on to the public comments. To allow the public to address the commission on any matter that's not on today's agenda. Do we have any speakers, Mercedes?
I did not have any hands raised.
Okay, and no speaker cards either?
We don't have any speaker cards.
So in that case, we close the public comments. Moving on to consent agenda. We have consideration of the minutes for June twenty one hearings. So we would like to postpone those till the next meeting. And next, we have moved to the regular agenda, item two. Could you please read that in Mercedes?
Item number two, the owner and the applicant are San Mateo County Parks with the file number PLN two zero two three dash zero 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 five six.
No, no, it's not working.
Good morning, Commissioner, and Chair. For the record, my name is Luis. I agree with the office. So I'll be presenting item number two.
Luis, let me ask you to stop for a second because I don't think your mic is functioning and that means the Zoom participants won't hear. Oh, there we go. Okay, good to go. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So the San Mateo County Parks Department is seeking a coastal development permit to replace fencing on the bluff above Seal Cove at the Fitzgerald Marine Reserve and to install a new table and well skeleton display encircled by split rail fencing at the reserves ranger station and parking area. So the existing fencing at the Seal Cove bluff is split rail fencing that has degraded and will be removed and replaced with twenty six feet of new split rail fencing for the protection of public safety. The new fencing will be slightly closer to the top of the bluff and will match the existing fence at a height of four feet. The gray wall skeleton display will be located in the picnic area behind the park visitor center. The display will include an approximately forty foot gray wall skeleton mounted on metal posts. The display will be encircled by three foot tall split rail fence and will serve to allow viewing but to limit access to the display. Additionally, a new picnic table was proposed to replace the loss of picnic area and to facilitate school groups. And this will fill a need to accommodate large groups. The concrete table will be approximately fifteen feet in length and will be surrounded by two ten foot logs and one twenty foot log making a U shaped area to be used for sitting around the table. So these are the two parcels associated with this application with the Seal Cove and Ranger Station project sites areas identified. So the existing fence at the Seal Cove bluff again has degraded and will be removed and replaced for the protection of public safety. And the new fencing will be slightly closer by four feet to the top of the bluff and the new fencing will match the existing fence height of four feet. And here's an overall site plan of the ranger station. The forty foot gray wall skeleton display to be mounted on a metal post will be located in the picnic area behind the park visitor center. And a new picnic table is proposed at the south end of the site. And the display will be encircled by three foot tall split rail fence, which will serve to allow viewing but again to limit access to the display. And the new picnic table will replace the loss of picnic area and will fill a need to accommodate large groups. And the concrete table will be approximately fifteen feet away. So the county's local coastal program is a subset of the county's general plan and the two documents are internally consistent. So the project's consistency with the local coastal program, which is more specific than the general plan with regard to issues raised by this project, therefore also addresses a project's consistency with the county's general plan. And the project as described in the application and the accompanying materials and its condition conforms with the plans, policies, requirements and standards of the San Mateo County Local Coastal Program with regards to the locating and planning of new development, sensitive habitats, visual resources, hazards, shoreline access, and the recreation slash visitor serving facilities component. And the supporting analysis demonstrating conformance with the local coastal program is found in section A two of the staff report. And upon review of this application against the design criteria identified in the community design manual, the project was found to be in conformance with the site design and exterior appearance criteria. The Seal Cove project site is in the Resource Management Coastal Zone Design Review and Coastal Development District. The project complies with the use density and intensity of development provisions of this district intended to conserve natural features and scenic values. Public recreation is a permitted use in this district and for parcel zone resource management coastal zone located in the midcoast local coastal program project area. The regulations of the design review district apply only to residential development and no residential development is proposed. And the ranger station and parking area is in the one family residential district, residential density district seventeen, the design review district and coastal development district. And chapter six lists public parks as a permitted use in the R one zoning district. And the applicable development standards are specified by the S seventeen combining district for properties in the midcoast area. And this is in addition to chapter twenty, which lists the general provisions and exceptions. And the project complies with the land use and development standards of the R one S seventeen zoning district. And further, the improvements would be compatible with the existing character and use of the ranger station and parking area. And the coast side design review officer determined that this project is exempt from design review. And the San Mateo County Parks Department acting as lead agency filed a notice of exemption on April fourth, two thousand and twenty three and determined that all project activities are categorically exempt from review under the California Environmental Quality Act, a sequel guideline section fifteen three oh three E. And this is a class three exemption relating to the construction and location of limited numbers of new small facilities or structures. And staff recommends that the planning commission approve the coastal development permit identified as kind of file number PLN twenty twenty three dash zero 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 five six by adopting the required findings and conditions of approval contained in attachment A. And I wanted to clarify, as mentioned by Mercedes before starting the item, that the agenda list Sam Hertzberg as the applicant issued list San Mateo County Parks as was read in as the applicant's representative. And also on page three of the staff report, it describes a setting at Seal Cove as within a stand of eucalyptus trees, but they're actually a stand of Monterey Cypress trees. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation. We have to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Louis.
Madam Chair, if I may have a moment to just say thank you to Luis. I think this is his first presentation to the planning commission. He's one of our new planners and it's great to have him on the team. So welcome, Luis, and thank you for your presentation. I also wanted to let the commissioners know that Parks Planner Sam Hertzberg is on Zoom. So should you have questions for him, he's available.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. This was a good presentation and I really want to thank you for letting us have a preview of your presentation ahead of time. This, this is really one of the first time we have had this chance to do that. Thank you. Okay. Commissioners have questions? Commissioner Hanson?
Small question. The picnic table, is it designed for wheelchairs?
That may be a question for the applicant representative.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Any, is that it?
That was it.
Commissioners, Ketchum?
I have a question that I also think is for the applicant. Thanks.
Commissioner Remigens?
Same thing. I have a question.
But.
No question.
No, no. Um. I have a question. You let me know whether it's for the applicant. In case it's for the applicant, then we wait for that. From, from the report, I understood that the project duration is about, about a year, one year?
Correct. It was condition for work to be completed.
Within a year. So during that time is, is the part like would still be open or was it, would it be closed?
From my understanding, it would still be open. I believe Sam may be able to further speak to this, but they likely just close off the area of work, but the remainder of the park space will be open for visitors.
Okay. Okay. And in, I have been there. And I felt that the parking is kind of limited in that area. Is there anything, any thing about increasing parking or?
It's not associated with this application. They may or may not have plans to do that in the future, but nothing that was submitted in association with this application.
Yeah, and I can comment on that. You know, the location is constrained, surrounded by existing family residences and sensitive habitat areas. So I think the potential for increasing parking is pretty limited. At the same time, I don't think this project in itself will result in a significant increase in the intensity of use of the site. So I think the installation of these facilities will be a beneficial amenity that won't necessarily result in increased demand beyond what already exists. So while parking is a challenge, I don't think this project in itself triggers the need for additional parking.
By that, you mean that whatever improvements that are being done will not trigger anything additional, any additional?
That's my assumption. I mean, well, skeletons are cool and I like to take my kids to go see them. So perhaps there will be a little bit of an uptick in interest from the young adults and parents, but I, I think it's an amenity that will enhance existing uses without resulting in a significant increase in use.
Okay, thank you. So let's have the applicant present whatever they would like to talk about.
Hi, Sam. Please unmute.
Okay, it looks like Mr. Hertzberg is online. Sam, can you confirm that you're hearing us and can speak? Looks like he's unmuted. Sam, are you there? Okay, well, perhaps we can try and address the questions that commissioners have. So Commissioner Hanson, I think you had the first question regarding accessibility of the table. Luis, can you tell us a little bit more about how the table will be constructed and whether or not it might be accessible?
Yeah, I do know the applicant did provide a detailed drawing, which I believe comes from their general standards. I don't have it here with me. But at least the table that would be constructed at the ranger station would be a concrete table about fifteen feet in length. And let me look through this staff report. I believe I have the height listed here as well.
Yes.
It's like twenty ninety.
Usually wheelchair picnic tables have an extended end on one side so the wheelchair can go underneath. It's pretty standard, but I just didn't see it specified. I'm sure the county is doing it. I just want to be sure. I just spent all week dealing with a wheelchair, so I'm kind of sensitive to it.
Yeah, I don't recall that detail. It may or may not have been listed in the drawing that was submitted. I don't have that in front of me at the moment. I apologize.
Mercedes, can you try and unmute Sam one more time? Okay, he just came off mute. Sam, are you there? I think he might be having microphone problems. Let's hope he can resolve that. I, I think the design of the table is likely to accommodate wheelchairs. I know.
I couldn't tell.
Yeah, I, I don't, I can't say for certain, but I do know that Parks keeps ADA compliance in mind in their design. So my assumption is that it would be.
Yeah, I, I think we could make a note of that, that it should be taken into account.
Right.
Right, because that's a very good point.
And there is a condition requiring that as well.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
You had a question for that?
Yeah, my question is the fence above the, above Seal Cove beach. Historically, the bluff top fencing has been moved further inland when it's replaced due to bluff erosion. So my question is, why would this section be moved closer to the cliff edge? Just curious.
That detail was not provided other than its current location. The only details provided regarding why they replaced it was taking place with that it had degrading. But in regards to why it's not being placed back in its exact location, that detail was offered.
And I would just comment on that, that, you know, I think Parks understands its responsibility to ensure that the fence line is located in a safe place and should it be subject to erosion, that it be removed and relocated before it becomes debris on the beach. So I'm confident that they will be, you know, monitoring that situation and taking appropriate steps as needed.
I'm confident as well. I'm just curious as to why this opposite approach.
Well, I mean, from my experience being out there, you know, the closer you can get to the edge, the better you can see the seals down on the beach and the other, you know, scenic view shed. So I, I think they're likely just trying to enhance that opportunity while still maintaining a safe condition.
Thank you.
Permission to unmute?
Yeah, my, I think you already kind of answered the question that has to do with parking. If I was just wondering if this is going to attract a significant amount of people that would require additional parking since parking is already limited, but I'm not sure if, you know, any consideration has been given about that. And if that's something that we will have to see once the usage, you know, with time as we figure out how many people come to see this thing, if it's, if it comes, if it becomes, you know, quite an attraction and it creates problems or more need for parking. That was my.
Right. And if neighbors have kind of complained about it, right? Because since it's a residential area.
Certainly, the impact of visitors to the reserve has an effect on the neighborhood. And I think this is an ongoing tension on the coast side of the desire of people to come visit this beautiful area and the impact it has on the quiet residential neighborhood characteristics of many of these areas. So, you know, when you look at state law and local policies regarding that issue, priority is given to visitors. There's a principle in the coastal act that our visitor serving resources need to be protected and that, you know, we strive to achieve balance with the neighboring residential uses, but we also try to make sure that the coast is accessible to everyone. And so I, I think that will continue to be a constant challenge in this area. But I also believe that it's not a reason not to provide the best experience for our visitors when they do come and interpretive facilities like this, I think not only go a long way in enhancing the experience of visiting this park, but in expanding the public's knowledge of our important marine resources that need to be protected and can inspire people to do, to take environmental impacts into greater consideration when they are visiting the park. So I do think that amenities like this will enhance protection of both this park and our larger marine environment.
If I may, with the chair's permission, Mr. Hertzberg tried to provide a substantive response to your questions via the county's internal chat, so not on the Zoom chat, but the one that is working. He confirmed that the picnic table, table will be wheelchair accessible at either end of the table and that areas will be closed during construction only, only around the areas being worked on. The rest of the park will remain accessible during that construction. The parking lot was improved in twenty thirteen and can't really increase in capacity. And that Mr. Monowitz's characterization about the rationale for the fence location was correct.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, no, it's a beautiful park. Very, very nice. Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Louis. Thank you for your presentation. So would commissioners like to deliberate or would, would I like to? I'm open to a motion. Public comment? Okay, of course. Any public comments?
You do not have any hands raised at this time, nor do we have any security guards?
Okay, so in that case, we close the public comments. Next, we'll move on to deliberations or motion.
I'd be happy to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Please.
Okay.
If I may, just, I just wanted to comment on, on this thing a little bit to say that I'm very much in favor of, you know, educational things that it'll be a better experience for the visitors. I think the, the parks in general, that's a great job of, you know, maintaining the parks and making it attractive. But I, as Mr. Monowitz was saying, you know, we, we do have the challenge of that local community. The situation with parking and all that, then we have to play a fine balance. But the reality is that the rest of the the population in the county needs to go out and enjoy the beautiful areas that we have. I mean, I, I was just last week with my family, we have kind of a tradition of going and camping in our local parks around here. So last week I spent at Memorial Park. And it's, you know, we, we go with the tons of friends and we really like amenities of all the stuff that is put around and to read and learn more about what we have. And, and it's really important for the experience. So anyway, I just wanted to say that I really like this project, what it will do. So anyway, that, that's what I wanted to say. Thanks.
I'll make a comment too at this time. It's a beautiful reserve. I visited it with my family and this, there are tide pools, which we are not even talking about here because all the improvements that we, we are approving today do not impact the tide pools, but of course the visitors do go through this area to get to the tide pools and it is gorgeous. So it, it is a very good park. And the other thing that I want to comment on is that I was so happy to see the short timeline for this project. It started in February and in July, it's in front of the planning commission, which is really great way to move a project forward. So I, I commend, commend your department for doing that. So thank you. That's all. So go ahead with your motion.
Okay, and I just want to echo the same sentiments as the other speakers have said here, you know, it's, people come for the reserve and not for the amenities. The amenities improve the experience. You know, isn't going to change the parking at all, do it increasing in and improving the amenity itself. It's a lovely place. It's always been a lovely place. So I would like this commission to approve the coastal development permit accounting for county file number PLN twenty twenty three fifty six and adopting the required financing conditions for approval and attachment A.
Second. Commissioner Hanson?
Hi.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Hi.
Commissioner Sirano Quan?
Hi.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Hi.
Chair Gupta?
I, motion carries.
Congratulations. Looking forward to it. Okay. So we move on to our correspondence and other matters?
Yes, thank you, Chair Gupta. I do not have any correspondence to report today. And I want to thank the commission for coming in for a short meeting today. In the past, if we had just one item off and we postponed and consolidated, but we do have a busy meeting for our next scheduled meeting of July twenty six. We've got five items on the agenda. They include the continuation of the Bagerman project in Devonshire Canyon. That was continued due to dispute over the driveway through the easement area. The parties continue to work together towards a solution there. We've got a major modification to a design review permit as well as a nonconforming use permit and grading permit for a new home in Emerald Lake Hills. We have a permit for a new water tank in Ascension Heights subdivision location. This is a Cal Water project to provide an additional water tank to serve the subdivision that was previously approved by the county. We also have general plan and zoning amendments as well as a use permit to allow a new sixty nine unit hotel on El Camino Real in North Fair Oaks. That's known as the Commons Hotel Project.
So is that going to be a long?
Um, I, I think the commission should plan on a meeting that will last at least till noon time. As far as the director's report goes, the staff continues to work on the responding to the state HCD's comments on our housing element update. The state HCD's comments on our housing element update, getting that process completed is a priority for us. It requires that we redo the sites analysis because some of the assumptions that we made in. That where we could provide that our regional allocation were rejected by the state. So we're having to redo that sites analysis and. I'll be keeping the commissioners posted on how that continues to evolve. I also wanted to let you know that we are kicking off a number of new long range planning projects that you're aware of from the work plan. That includes the environment, environmental justice and safety elements, the contractor. Work that will, we're using to get those done was approved by the board supervisors. So you may be hearing. Some of the initial outreach that will be occurring for those projects. We're also kicking off our mid coast transportation demand management project. That was a grant we got to look at ways in which we can reduce the amount of single occupancy vehicle use and try and enhance other forms of transit on the coast. And I'm pleased to announce that in the near future, we'll be releasing our proposed approach for dealing with the Princeton shoreline. Under Plan Princeton, I know that's been a long awaited next phase of that important project and. Under Barat's leadership, we've been able to make some good progress on that. So look forward to bringing those to the commission and. Available to answer any questions you may have.
Any, anything on the budget?
Oh, yes, thanks. I meant to note that, that our budget was approved. There was not any significant issues raised at that time when the board considered it. And so, yeah, good news there. No significant changes really in our funding levels. We did gain a position, which is great news and. We, the, the majority of our priority projects is shown on the long range work plan have been funded, so.
Thank you. Any questions for Steve?
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Ketchum.
I would like some help with the, what was known as Excela, basically the. The previous version or whatever, a few years ago, documents were posted there. You could follow along and they're no longer posted there and. I don't know how to access them. And I know we did speak previously about. Making the letters of decision available and you, you said that it's on Excel. It's up under documents. I, I can't find that. So who could I reach out to? Walk me through that or whatever.
Yeah, we'd be happy to arrange for some one-on-one training with the commissioners. If this is. Probably be best to do it one-on-one to avoid any sort of brown ass conflict. So. I will take that back to the team and we'll be in touch to get you what you need.
There are no more questions. The meeting is.
Actually, I think we, yeah. As you know, I missed the last two meetings due to. That they were scheduled under our non-regular times. So. I, my question is, is there anything, any other meetings that may be moved from the regular? Schedule the second and fourth, just so that I know way ahead because I now my, I'm not as flexible as I used to be. So that's why. I don't want to miss any meetings. And so I just need to know way ahead.
Sure, understood and apologies if that change hadn't been communicated adequately. I was working just this week on the calendar for next year and it appears that unlike this year. Every second and fourth Wednesday of the year, it, the chambers are available. So for the remainder of this year. My understanding is we are sticking with the second and fourth, and that will be the case in the following year.
Okay. Yeah, in general, I'm not saying that I need a year ahead, but maybe a month or so ahead, you know.
Absolutely. Well, I will double check the calendar and if there's any. Variances from the second and fourth, I'll be sure to let you know.
Okay, that's it for me. Thanks. Sure.
I think in November, we have. The second meeting in November. I'm looking at the calendar here. Second meeting is on the last Wednesday.
Okay. And, yeah, normally in like in December, if it falls, obviously. Within the holidays, we move things around a little bit and that's understandable. But anyway, that this last two meetings took me by surprise. That's all. Thanks.
Yes, so. That is correct. In December, we will have one meeting. It's on December thirteenth. For November, we'll be meeting on the eighth and the twenty ninth. So I think we push that back to the fourth. Wednesday in order to avoid. Conflict with Thanksgiving. Otherwise, it appears that, yeah, for the remainder of the year, we'll be on the second and fourth Wednesday.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. There is, there's a calendar for. Never mind, never mind. Yeah, there's a calendar for two thousand and twenty three and it has for November, the eighth and the twenty ninth.
Yeah, right.
And then just thirteenth in December.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
All right. So the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.